Good evening and welcome to the February 7th Board Work Session for the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin, I would like to ask everyone to please turn off your wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphones and taping of our meeting. I would like to ask some Board colleague Paige to lead us in the Board's prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh God, we pray to minister all that is which just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance. Steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding. Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible.
Ms. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Good evening, Board members.
Evening.
Ms. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boozer-Struther?
Here.
Mr. Burrows? Ms. Eubanks? Mr. Montero? Mr. Murray?
Present.
Ms. Page?
Present.
Ms. Queen? Ms. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Present.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace? Ms. Williams? Dr. Thornton?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleague, we'll now move to the adoption of the agenda for the February 7th Board Meeting. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Properly moving seconded that the agenda before you be adopted, those in favor, inter discussion of the agenda. Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, please say no, the agenda is adopted. Motion is now in order to approve our Board Minutes from January 24th. The motion is in order to approve the minutes from January 24th. It's properly moving seconded that the minutes of the Board for January 24th be approved. Any discussions, additions to the minutes? Hearing none, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no, the ayes have it. We'll now move to the public comments section of our agenda. Colleagues, we have four speakers who've registered to speak. I'd ask our speakers who've registered, please follow the guidelines that you have agreed to in signing up. The first speaker, let's see, where's my list?
May I have personal privilege? I just want to recognize Senator for District 47, Senator Malcolm Augustine. Augustine.
Welcome, sir. Thank you, and good luck with all that Kerwin money in Annapolis. Thank you for all you do for our school system, Senator. We appreciate it. I would like to, please, I'm gonna mess this name of Zeyn Butler. Is Ms. Butler here? Did I get that right, colleague staff? Zeyn Butler. Don't see Ms. Butler, who's a 10th grade student from the Bowie High School. Armani McMillan? Is Armani here, who's the Executive Director of IMPACT? I don't see Ms. McMillan here. Our next speaker is Michelle M. Clark, PGCA Board of Directors regarding the budget. And I don't see Ms. Clark. And our final speaker is Ms. Teresa Duttley, who's also from PGCA. Okay, so our speakers are not here. That gives us a chance to move to the next part of our agenda. We don't have any non-agenda items, follow-up items. I'd like to have a, let's see, Dr. Goson, I think that's you now, right? Legislative update. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. I'd like to introduce to our Board members Demetri Tobias, who's gonna provide a legislative update on local bills as well as Kerwin.
Mr. Tobias, Tobias, let me thank you for the work that you're doing in Annapolis on our behalf. You're gonna bring home the Kerwin money, right?
Such a big ass, doctor. But I appreciate the confidence. Thank you so much.
I'm saying that only because I know we're being televised and every word out of my mouth is Kerwin, Kerwin, Kerwin.
End words have power, so let me agree.
Thank you. Please, please go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. You all have a copy of the written report, which included information on the school systems legislative priorities, some of the budget highlights from the governors operating in capital budget, as well as an update on the current commission, the set of policy recommendations, and some of the funding priorities that they've identified for next fiscal year.
Let me take this opportunity, Dr. Goson, and to you, Mr. Tobias, to say how well done that Kerwin analysis was.
Thank you, sir.
And I would ask Board members to please read that carefully, that analysis. Thank you all for doing that, but go ahead.
Thank you so much. It's important to note that where we are in the budget season, as you, as you, as the local board are weighing the different priorities and options and feedback from stakeholders and deciding what final budget to pass, the legislature is also in the same process. So, current, the commission has stated what their priorities are, and the funding that they've requested is significantly less at this time than what was actually included in the budget. But there is still time, and so there may be a supplemental budget that the governor decides to submit. There also may be some movement between programs and things that the House does by the time it comes time to pass. So, we're tracking all of that very carefully, and I'll be keeping you updated pretty regularly on where we are in the process. What I will do, though, is focus the bulk of my time on an explanation of the local bills that have been filed regarding the school system, and also the feedback that I've received from staff for your consideration and action. I will also just highlight a few of the major statewide bills that we're also following at the end, and of course, will be available to answer any questions that you all may have. And if it's all right, I'll go ahead and just start with the local bills. First bill for your consideration is PG 50219, which is also House Bill 192. It's the Prince George's County Board of Education Members' Expense Forms Publication on the Website. This bill was introduced by Delegate Geraldine Valentino Smith, and simply it requires all of the Board of Education's expense forms to be immediately available to the public and posted on the website. Just as a matter, just for your information, what we do currently, if we're requested, if that information is requested, it's generally treated as a Public Information Act request, and the Office of General Counsel will provide the information. Usually, there's about a 10 to 30 day window, depending on what other requests are pending. But the information is public, it's provided, but what this bill seeks to do is to make it immediately available on the Board's website.
Do you have the latest on the status of that bill?
Yes, so they had, the bill hearings were held today in the Ways and Means Committee this afternoon. Just to take a quick step back in terms of process, the Standing Committee that's gonna be hearing all of these bills is Ways and Means, that's in the House. But the committee, Ways and Means, won't actually take any action on any of them, a up-down vote, without a decision from our delegation, and our delegation has not yet moved on any of these bills. These bills are currently before the Delegation's Education Committee, that's chaired by Delegate Washington, Alonso Washington. So, they've been hearing these bills, but they haven't actually voted, but we're anticipating that they're gonna be voting on these bills on next Wednesday. So, they're aware that the Board is gonna be considering these tonight.
Please, please check with Delegate Valentino Smith. I've been in conversation with her on behalf of the Board of Education.
Okay.
Regarding this particular legislation.
Okay.
Please go ahead.
I sure will. So, Mr. Chair, would you prefer me to just go through each bill, and then you decide if you wanna, what action you wanna take, or?
Colleagues, is it that you want to take a position on each bill? Is that what you all want to do? Is that what we've normally done as a Board? We have not?
Like a Thornton? Excuse me, I was, so as a former Chair of the Policy, Legal, and Legislative Committee, normally as a committee, and it seems in many ways we're sort of functioning in that capacity tonight, we would all, we would have our counsel review every bill and then determine whether we would take a position or no position, which is often the case, or a position with amendments, or not. So, but we also, we almost always take the recommendation of the administration on these things, but after deliberation as a committee.
On this particular one, I would, based upon my deliberations with the sponsor, I would ask the Board to delay any position on this. I'm reasonably confident that there may be a different outcome, so I'd ask your permission to not take a position on this one, at this point. Let's go to the next one. We may have to come back to this if our discussions are not fruitful. Let's go to the next one.
Okay. The next bill is PG 50319. This is House Bill 184. This is the limit on class size in elementary schools. The bill would place a cap of enrollment, no more than 30 students in grades kindergarten to three. The bill takes effect for next school year. And currently, based on feedback from our staff, we have nine classes in six schools. Nine classes in six schools that have more than 30 kindergarten to third graders in the class. The highest, I believe, was about 33 or so. But we're talking about an impact for nine, for nine classes this year. Assuming that the school system would need, if the bill were to pass and the school system would need to hire new teachers to split those classes at each school into two, the minimum potential fiscal impact we're looking at is about $569,000 for next fiscal year. That includes salaries, benefits, and one-time costs for new classroom supplies and materials. It does not include retirement costs and other kind of incident, other expenses that the Board would be responsible for. But that's, that's all of the information that I can provide to you based on our staff's input.
And if possible, Mr. Chair, just provide a little bit of additional context. As you know, Dr. Goson, when she introduced her budget, and we discussed this at the last Budget Work Session, Dr. Goson presented a class size reduction plan, K23. However, it's important to note, while this bill caps it at 30, Dr. Goson's plan actually caps it at 27. There's a minimum and a maximum. And those fiscal numbers, as you recall, about $12 million, based off of 86 teachers and 40-plus paraprofessionals. So, the question ultimately is, what's the best for students? The data tends to suggest that 30 is still a very high number. And ultimately, as we're working towards lowering class size, we took a slightly stricter approach in Dr. Goson's budget, and there's a pretty large fiscal impact on that as well.
Thank you. And Board colleagues, I certainly, I'm being presumptuous as Chair, but I'd recommend that we suggest none support of it, but with the rationale that the strategic objective is being achieved in the current programming by the CEO with the support of the Board. So, that's the position that, I don't, do we need a motion to that effect?
Motion to oppose.
Yes, please. Please.
Point of clarification?
Can we get that on the floor as a motion, so we can discuss it if it's necessary? Okay, second, it's moved and seconded, and let's go to the discussion, yes?
Point of clarification, this legislation would only impact Prince George's County, or the rest of jurisdictions in Maryland?
Just Prince George's.
Okay, can, can someone elaborate on our purpose of opposition if we plan on lowering the standards? Meaning, Dr. Goson's goal is to have 27 students per class, so opposing or abstaining, why would we oppose it if we're gonna do it anyway?
Well, first of all, this bill actually does not have any financial, it doesn't include financial support for the recommendation that we had before us for fiscal year 2020. And though I've put in a request for $12 million to address our K to three class size request, it's no guarantee that the County Council will agree to do that. If by chance we agree to go along with this bill with no monetary amount to it, and then we get to the County Council, and it's then that we have to cover this amount, I don't want that amount to have to decrease the amount that I'm requesting for compensation. It's also important to know that really the County Council only has to give us maintenance of effort, and even though my request is for 45.5 million, our maintenance of effort is only 2 million.
Mr. Murray?
Colleagues, I just wanted to explain my vote kinda to Amanya's point. I think that thankfully, Dr. Goson is moving in the right direction about the class sizes piece. I think it makes sense to support Delegate Walker's bill. I think it moves us in the right direction. You know, there is no guarantee, depending on the way we fund our budget, that the 27-student cap will be something that we fund. And so, by this bill passing, I think it would force our hands, but in a good way, for the sake of those classrooms that are K to three, they do have over 30 students. So, I'll be voting no, and hopefully, we can, if it fails, bring a motion back to support it.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Ms. Ahmed?
I just wanna echo Mr. Murray's point of, I think the intent of this bill is good. I want lower class sizes. My community wants lower class sizes. And knowing that Dr. Goson has taken the leadership in trying to do that, makes me more comfortable to support this bill as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Ms. Queen?
Again, I agree with both of my colleagues also. I do appreciate Dr. Goson for what she's trying to do to make class sizes smaller. But in our reality, at the early age from kindergarten to third grade is so important for learning of a child, so we really need it lower. So, I think it's a great bill, and we really need to think about it. Although money may not come behind it, but I think it will force the delegation to realize that if we're gonna do this, money will be needed further on. So, I think it's an important bill that we should support.
Mr. Thomas? Mr. Thomas?
I'm acting on behalf of Mr. Thomas today, cuz he's in my seat. No, I buzzed in from his seat.
Okay, Mr. Valentine?
So, I mean, colleague Queen, I mean, you sort of echo my point, but it's my reason for opposing. I mean, it's an unfunded mandate coming from the state. As representative of the Board to the Maryland Association Board of Education, on which myself and Mr. Tobias both sit, the position of the Association is almost always to oppose legislation that puts mandates on local school systems to be governed from the state as opposed to making the decisions at the system level. It's clear we have a leader who's gonna do that, and when you do that, you sort of put yourself on the hook in a lot of ways moving forward. I hate to sort of pull this card all the time, but I mean, I'm a father of a third grader right now in a Prince George's County public school. And so, this is very close to my heart as far as how many students are in my daughter's class, and particularly since the Montessori. And so, that's a, that's a clear indication, but she has a very strong teacher. Our class is not at 30. But if it was, I believe she'd be able to handle that as well. At the same time, I think it's coming upon us as a Board to put resources where we think it's needed the most, and to hold the superintendent accountable for what she says she's going to do. And so, I oppose this not on the idea that I don't think we should have that size, but that the state should tell us to do it, and that it didn't have any, there's no money coming with it. And so, that's, I'm always mindful of that. And so, I just wanted to be clear of why I made the motion and why I would oppose this and similar legislation.
And that's, if I could take my comment, and I'll come here, Mr. Rhodes. I think I obviously support reduction in class size, but I also think that's, it's very selective. We need more school psychologists. We need more counselors. Why not mandate more counselors, more school psychologists? Where does it stop? So, it's not, it's the principle, and in addition to the absence of, it's, I call it unfunded mandates. So, I don't want this Board to be perceived as being divided on whether we support reduction in class size. Mr. Rhodes?
Nothing, sir. That was, the point is unfunded mandate, and ultimately, and generally speaking, and whether this Board agrees or not, the conversation about how to legislate education policy is often left to the local level. It's left to this Board of Education to set a policy related to board, to class size, or to direct the administration to do a study and come back with the fiscal implications. That's why the local Board of Education exists. So, those are some of the challenges that we, that we see with the bill. We recognize, and we've had ongoing conversations with the delegate, and I think it's fair to say that he understands the system's position. He acknowledged and thanked Dr. Goson for her efforts in going beyond what his bill has requested. It's also important to know, I think this is the third, third year in a row that this bill has been put in Annapolis. And unfortunately, due to the number of things we just stated, it's consistently not made it across the finish line. And likely will continue to have these hurdles, not just from Prince George's County's local Board, but from statewide conversations. So, MAE, the Association of Board of Educations, PAZAM, the Superintendent's Association, and likely several other large organizations will weigh in similarly because of the unfunded mandate and the local autonomy that Boards have.
Ms. Berkeley, call the roll.
Point of clarification, may I have the House Bill number again, please?
House Bill 184.
184, thank you. Ms. Ahmed?
Can you read the motion once more?
Sure. Motion to oppose House Bill 184. Ms. Ahmed?
Move to oppose, no. I think that's what I mean. I want to support this bill, so by supporting this bill, I mean, I'm voting no on this.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Ms. Boozer-Struther?
Yes.
Ms. Eubanks? Mr. Murray?
No.
Ms. Page?
Abstain.
Ms. Queen? Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Valentine? Dr. Thornton?
Yes.
Five ayes, four nays, one abstain.
Thank you. So, the motion passes. The next bill, please?
The next bill is PG 50419.
Point of clarification. Point of, go ahead.
Yeah, point of clarification, seven, eight votes with, Amanya, eight votes to go for it to be a pass.
For official Board action takes eight votes. If you're making a recommendation and it's not official Board action, it doesn't take eight votes.
Can you, can you cite where that's?
Yes, please.
Where do we look to for guidance on the resolution piece being just a simple majority of members present?
On the House Bill, I don't know, seven passed in 2013 says that all official Board action takes eight votes. If it's, if the student member votes, it's seven votes if the student member doesn't vote.
Right, so, but it's your opinion that this motion passes with five votes?
No, I'm saying whether you regard it as official Board action or as just a recommendation. And the law says official Board action takes eight votes to pass if the student member votes, or seven if the student member doesn't vote. If you're just making a recommendation, it's not official Board action, that's a different story.
This is an action of the Board at a, at a Board Work Session.
I'm just telling you, it's up to you to decide what it is that you're voting on, not me. But I'm saying if it's an official action, like they usually have on your agenda, first reader, second reader, that's official Board action. This is short of that, because it's not on the agenda as a, as an action item. So, therefore, in my opinion, it's a recommendation, but that's ultimately for you to decide.
Chairman, Thornton?
Yes, Mr. Valentine, and then I'll issue a ruling, and it can be contested if you want to.
Just one comment, and so, and I understand what my colleague has mentioned as far as whether this is considered a Board action or a recommendation. In the, as a policy committee, we function publicly like we would here now. We just happen to be sitting here as opposed to there, and that's a public meeting. We would similarly make a recommendation to Mr. Tobias, which is what we're doing now. And in that case, it was a majority vote of the policy committee on behalf of the Board to go back to the delegation to take that recommendation. So, the question, again, we could have this debate, and I'm assuming you'll make the final decision about whether this is a recommendation or a Board action. And in the past, when we're giving recommendations to Mr. Tobias on how to function, it is a recommendation. It's not necessarily a Board action. That's how it was functioned in the past, just for clarification.
Will the last be?
Just a moment, just a moment, Mr. Murray, just a moment. You seeking to be recognized? Please.
Thank you. In the past, though, the Board would take the recommendation from the policy committee, I believe, and then vote it up, at which point?
Yes, but when there were votes that were taken in between Board meetings, so oftentimes, the Board meeting would happen two, every two weeks, and there were bore, and there were votes that had to be taken in Annapolis between those two times, those recommendations were, we gave the administration the power to do that. Because they have to function on a, pretty much a day-to-day basis when a bill comes up.
Mr. Murray, you have a different?
If I could just make one last point, I just think it opens, it opens a very interesting precedent if five members can pass recommendations which hypothetically could go off in any direction as to what the Board of Education recommends, and you would have five people speaking on behalf of a 14-member Board.
Yeah. I was waiting on someone else to say something before I issue my ruling. I'm persuaded as a Chair, and that can be a motion to, oh, Mr. Valentine, is that you? Mr. Thomas?
I apologize for switching the seats. I didn't know that Mr. Valentine was gonna attend. So, I overheard you mentioning you wanting us to all be on the main days together, and so, I just took it upon myself to move my name tag. So, my apologies. It is nice to be on the mainland. Okay. My question was just for Mr. Lucci, does it actually state that if we are making a recommendation that a simple majority is what's needed? Is that, is that reasonable?
No, it only states about official Board action, and which is then defined in Board Policy 9360 that has the procedure. Either it's an emergency action and takes effect that date, or it goes to the first reader, second reader process, in which case it takes effect when you have the second reader. But those, that's how it's defined, is Board action is by Board Policy 9360. In the absence of that, there is no requirement that there be an eight-person majority when the student board number votes.
Understood. So, there's no requirement that there is any person majority, but there's also no state, nothing that states that there's just a simple majority required as well?
Right, and then, I mean, if there's nothing in law or Board policy, then, then, right, then the absence, there is no requirement, and it's whatever.
So, Mr. Lucci, in the absence of an eight-person majority for this, the result would be no action by the Board. It would be no position by the Board of Education. Is that right, colleagues?
Right.
The motion would fail, and there would be no action by the Board. We pick no position on this. Yeah, please, please.
If I'm reading this correctly from the policy that Mr. Lucci just stated, it says that no motion or resolution may be declared adopted without the concurrence of eight voting members. I mean, resolution, recommendation, I think it's pretty clear, it's a majority of the Board.
I'm gonna, I'm going to rule that it does require eight Board members to vote. And I, my ruling can obviously be objected to by those who are in the majority. Any objections to my motion, to my ruling? So, that means that we take no position on this. Please proceed to the next.
Dr. Thornton, I would just be on the record as objecting to it just based on, on the past, so being, but just to be on the record.
You want to officially, so you can have a vote on it? Sure?
As it looks here, I mean, the question would be, would that require an eight-person vote as well? Which, based on your recommendation, it may, which I don't, I don't think we have. And so, of the two, four, six, eight, 10 of us who are here tonight, I imagine that would be hard to get to eight votes on anything unless it was sort of a slam dunk. And I'll just say this, if Mr. Tobias is going to Annapolis with a no position on a lot of these, it will say a lot, you know, about, you know, there are some things that we may be, we may want to oppose for reasons that we may not get to eight, and there are things that we may want to support that we may not get to eight, and so, that's a question.
That's true, that's true. And so, that's where we are. Go to the next one, please.
The next bill is PG 50419. The next bill is PG five oh four nineteen, House Bill one ninety-five. This is the Financial Literacy Curriculum Graduation Requirement Bill. This bill has been placed, put in place for both Prince George's County and Delegate Walker has also introduced it at the statewide level as well. All of the local bills, as I stated earlier, were heard this, this afternoon in ways and means. What this bill would require is for the board to offer financial literacy curriculum as a graduation requirement for our high school students. Based on information from our staff, financial literacy is currently offered as an elective at the high school level, but the financial literacy content is actually embedded throughout the curriculum in several areas. I'll just list a couple of them briefly for you. In elementary school, grade three, the concepts are introduced in the social studies course. At the middle school level, starting in grade eight, the social studies courses and the math courses, through the junior achievement finance park as well, enables the students to demonstrate their financial knowledge and to participate in some hands-on activities. This includes nineteen hours of financial literacy relating to income, savings, investments, risk management, credit, debt, and budgets. At the high school level, as well, in addition to the electives that I mentioned, the financial literacy content is embedded in at least two graduation required courses. That's U.S. history and national, state, and local government. In addition, our high school students are provided with several other opportunities for hands-on opportunities to apply these concepts. Based on the feedback from our staff, if the, if the graduation requirement were in place, based on the size of most of our high schools and the student enrollment, we would look to hire two new teachers per school to, to cover the required course, per high school, per high school. So you're thirty-one sites, two new teachers. At that rate, not including classroom costs, materials, et cetera, to hire two new teachers at each high school, that would be about a six-point-four million-dollar fiscal impact.
Excuse me? Six-point-two.
Oh, I'm sorry, six-point-two, thank you for the correction. Six-point-two million-dollar fiscal impact for staffing costs.
Thank you. Colleagues, you've heard that discussion, Mr. Murray.
Colleagues, I'd like to put on the floor to support this bill. I've been drafting a work group proposal around.
Please, 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 just, just your motion at this point. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably seconded that we have support for this bill. Mr. Murray, please.
Colleagues, financial literacy is something that's very near and dear to me, I think particularly lacking in our district and really needed amongst our students and young people that are going out into the world, going out into college, navigating loans, credit, and all of those different things. As I was gonna say, I'm drafting a work group that I hope to start up shortly on the matter. I think it's something that's long overdue, and I know Delegate Walker has been pushing this for years, and I think it would send a great message if, if the board supported it.
Thank you. And Ms. Ahmed?
No, I just wanted to echo Mr. Murray's points. I actually studied finance and economics in college because I felt a need to learn more, and I felt that I wasn't prepared to handle.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. I wasn't prepared to handle finance through our public schools. So I think that this would be a great opportunity to increase the power of our students in growing and maintaining wealth and bring our population to a position of power in the DMV area and beyond.
Thank you, and Ms. Ahmed. Mr. Val, may I, Ms. Page?
I have a clarification question with respects to the legislation. So if we support this, that means that the plan that they have written in the legislation is, we're gonna have to adopt that, like the third grade, no?
No, no. The, the legislation requires it as a graduation requirement at the high school level, so by high, it has to be offered as a course in high school. It doesn't affect elementary and middle schools.
And would they dictate the curriculum for that?
Well, they're, they're seeking to dictate the curriculum through the bill. That's, yeah, that's.
Okay, um, so I'm a very strong advocate for financial literacy. I know as a graduating senior, you need to know everything about everything when it comes to finances. So I completely agree with my sentiments, or sentiments shared with Mr. Murray with respects to us needing financial literacy, but I feel like we can do a better job as a board, or having the administration do that for us, with respects to crafting our own curriculum. Because what I don't wanna do is, I don't wanna approve it, yes, we support financial literacy, we want that implemented in our schools, but for us not to be able to have control over how it's taught.
Point of clarification, I don't believe that this is what that bill is saying. I don't think the curriculum is what this bill is saying. The bill is just requiring the requirement of graduation, is that correct?
Thank you, I was just about to correct that. I apologize for misstating. So what, what the bill requires, we have to have it as a required course. It doesn't actually have details on what the curriculum has to include. The local jurisdiction can control that part of it, but it just says that it has to be a part of the high school curriculum.
And would it take the place of any classes?
No, it's in addition to the graduation, the credits that you have to acquire to receive your diploma.
So, financial literacy is more of a math course, and we're already requiring students to take four math courses, so how would that work systematically?
You'd have to still take those four math credits and then an additional financial literacy course.
Is it possible for us to support with an amendment? Can I make a friendly amendment to your amendment or motion?
You asked me that question, yes, you can.
Um, can I make a friendly amendment to, um, to support the legislation and have it be that it replace one of those credits that we have to have?
Is that friendly, sir?
Dr. Golson, is that violating anything around MSDs?
Around COMAR. So you do, there are three credits that you have to take in mathematics, and so, what that does, that becomes a problem for a student who is advanced, who enters into high school, who's already taken, let's say, they start with a geometry course as a ninth grader, tenth grader would then take Algebra II, junior pre-calc, and then fourth year, what you're asking them to do is to replace that calculus with a financial literacy course.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so I assume you didn't accept that as a friendly? So they, they exist?
I, I, I just, I, it doesn't make me comfortable to force students to take five math courses. I feel like financial literacy is a priority. We could all have our opinions on the different subjects of mathematics, but if you ask me what I need to do with the circumference of a circle, I can not tell you that. What I can tell you is that I need to figure out how to fill out a W-two and W-four. So I don't, I, I would like to make that friendly amendment. I don't know if it's possible, but I'd rather us be bold and take that stand than for us to not take that stand and say, oh, maybe we could have done that.
Okay, uh, don't, I think it's being accepted as a friendly, so we'll go to Mr. Valentine.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Bias, if this is adopted in Prince George's County but not adopted statewide, would our students be held to a higher graduation requirement than the rest of the state while we're still being compared to the rest of the state?
Yes.
Point of clarification.
Just, just a moment, just a moment. Are you finished, Mr. Valentine?
No, I'm not. I, I think my, our, our student member sort of also brought up a question I had around whether this would replace a class, and as you all said, it would not. I think, you know, whether it be at the higher education level or the K through twelve level, when you're adding requirements, when we also, we also offer as an elective, and students right now can take that courses voluntarily, to put that on students who clearly are not voluntarily registering for it, as an additional requirement puts them at a disadvantage. Clearly, they need that. I understand the partnerships we have with junior achievement. I think what we can do as a system, and as board members, is do a better job of advising students at early on about the electives that we do offer, and that all of the support that we give them as students, and that's something we can do without a, a state mandate. And so as we are trying to support our students to give them the best future possible and to set them off in a, on time to graduate, adding anything additionally to the graduation requirement, I, I cannot support, especially when we are already doing a lot to offer them these opportunities through electives. In my position, in my background, particularly as, as an educator, both at the K through twelve and higher education level, students who opt into courses voluntarily do much better than students who are required to do them by mandate.
Mr. Thomas?
I can appreciate some of those, some of those sentiments, Mr. Valentine. At the same time, and while I do hear Ms. Page's thoughts as well, I, I do think it's quite important and worth noting that, um, yes, your students are able to sign up for courses on their own volition. At the same time, we're talking about skills that we think are really, really important, that really should almost be non-negotiable because of, of how, of how important they are going to be for our students immediately after graduation. Ms. Page brought up a good point in the, the tangible, applicable value of a financial literacy course versus that of a geometry course. Now, while, you know, your amendment did not pass, it's still worth noting that you feel as a high school senior that, that this financial literacy component is very, very important. As, as a millennial, I can also just voice that when I hear, you know, my own peers talk, this is a commonly shared thought, why didn't we have this required for us when we were in school? This is, this is, there are numerous memes on social media about this. It is something that you hear around, you know, discussed all the time. You know, it's, it, not to take up too much time, but there's a joke that, oh, well, I, I don't know how to, I don't know, understand credit, but I do know that mitochondria is the powerhouse of the cell, right? And so, again, my, my point that I want to make here is that we can all agree that this financial literacy component is absolutely important, and if this is, if this is one measure that guarantees that all students receive it, I think to put the onus on students to say, oh, well, you have the opportunity to opt in, well, I agree, we do see higher, you know, higher output when students do have that ability to opt in, but this seems like something that all students should be required, and so I, I urge my colleagues to consider that as well.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Queen? Ms. Queen, did you?
Sorry, it's just she had a point of clarification, and I wasn't sure if we got that upon a.
Please, you have the mic.
Okay, so, my question is going with financial literacy is that, do we still require accounting?
Accounting was never a required graduation course.
It was never required, so, okay, so then, okay.
We do offer it as an elective, just like we offer financial literacy for teens as an elective in our school system.
Okay, but it was never a required.
Accounting was never a required graduation course.
Okay, so, thank you.
Ms. Ruthers?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm gonna have to vote against this, but I do want to echo the sentiments of how important financial literacy is and that we as a board to continue to prioritize it within how we can do that in the system. And I have to say, I accompanied the, volunteer with the eighth graders from Pullen Middle at J. Financial Park, and I have to say that I thought the, the situation they were presented to work through was a pretty high level of critical thinking, and I was very impressed with their work through it, which gave me at least at the eighth-grade level an indication of where we are with that. But I do agree that this is life skills that we have to weave in to many aspects of our curriculum. I don't necessarily see it something that we just set aside. You know, I'm glad to hear it is an elective, but I do think it's incumbent upon us to, to look more deeply at this as a, as a life skills curriculum throughout the high school, so everyone graduates without having to choose it, and then also this difficult situation around what I'm hearing about the, the reality of the credits.
Thank you. Dr. Golson?
Yes, actually, I just wanted to, to compliment what Ms. Boozer-Strather mentioned about our eighth-grade students. So we require all of our eighth-grade students to participate in Finance Park, which is an opportunity for them to experience a unit with the selection of a career, based on that career, to know what their salary is, and then begin a life skill lesson that helps them to begin to manage their finances as if they were in that career. Every student experiences that. And then at high school level, we do offer financial literacy for teens as an, as a elective course that our students can participate in. It's important to know that right now we have sixty-seven classes of financial literacy for teens, with, which is, which we have a thousand five hundred sixty-eight students participating in it. To, for us to then require it as a graduation requirement means that we will have to take a fiscal note of six-point-two million dollars in order to make sure that we have staff in school in order to meet that requirement. At this point, I can't agree to that because my request for compensation would then substantially increase because then I'm adding in an additional set of teachers for that course as well.
Thank you. Ms. Ahmed?
Yes, I just wanted to make a point of clarification that there are other districts in the state that have enacted financial literacy as a requirement, and I didn't want us to leave this room without knowing that that is occurring. Charles, Garrett, and Caroline Counties have one full credit of personal finance required. Allegheny, Calvert, and Carroll require half a credit. That's according to the research that I've done from the state.
Do they do that pursuant to a mandate from the legislature or from the Board of Education?
That I can't answer to.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Page?
I can answer that from the board, and what I'd have to do is further investigation to determine if those jurisdictions require four years of mathematics credit. We do. May not.
Okay, Ms. Page and Mr. Valentine, and then we'll vote.
I, I know for Charles County that they do take it, but it's online, so students have an opportunity to take it and they have flexibility, so they can do it over spring break, or they can do it over the summer, they can do it during the school year, it's really up to them. There is one person, however, that administers the test in person based on what occurs in Charles County. However, my question was about Delegate Walker. He's proposing this for Prince George's County and the state of Maryland. So is it possible for us to support for the state of Maryland so that we are held to the same standards as everyone else? And not necessarily to just Prince George's County?
Who are you asking? Who are you asking? Is that a question?
Oh, I'm asking, I'm asking everybody.
So, so, yes, can, can you make a motion to support, obviously, but I just wanted to give you this information. I know that the Maryland Association of Boards of Education, MAB, will be opposing the, the bill. It's a curricular mandate, as will the Public School Superintendent's Association. So it's not, the opposition is often not on the intent or, or the, the good intentions of the bill, but the fact that the decision about local curriculum should be kept in the, the hands of the Boards of Education.
Okay, Mr. Valentine, and then we'll vote. Mr. Valentine?
It's, Mr. Valentine's Chief of Staff, yes. I had a question for Dr. Golson. Is there, is there a case where a student may request to take the financial literacy elective course? And you, you talked about the number of courses that are being offered, the number of students that are enrolled in these courses. Is there any case in which a student might request it and there's perhaps such a high demand that they're not able to be enrolled in that course because there's so many and because it's only offered as an elective?
First, I wouldn't know of a specific case, but what I could do is pull up that data and before we conclude tonight, tell you if there's any classes that are over thirty. So that would be an example. Now, what's important to know is that even though when we're creating master schedules, you might say that the limit is thirty, but it's just like a college-level course. You do have someone who can go in and override if it's just one or two students that'll go beyond that class size.
Thank you.
But I can check.
Thank you.
College, sorry, please.
Oh, I, I just wanted to add, and while I appreciate the partnership that we do have with J. Finance Park, it's actually in District Two, I, I wanna just voice, from my own experience as a teacher, having students that attended J. Finance Park, and it's just worth noting that when students aren't on grade level when it comes to math and reading performance, going to J. Finance Park may not be providing the actual output that we think it is. It sounds really nice that we're sending our kids to J. Finance Park and they have a career day and they have the, the opportunity to learn about how much money they're, they're gonna be making and what that looks like in terms of taxes, but I just want to provide, again, just totally from anecdotal evidence, that when students aren't actually prepared for that kind of academic rigor, that's, that's not really yielding a significant output for them. So I just wanted to share that and urge my colleagues to think about this.
Okay, the number of the legislation is what? Colleagues, the motion on the floor is to support that. Call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer-Strather?
No.
Ms. Eubanks? Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Ms. Page?
Aye. Aye.
Ms. Queen? Ms. Shepherd?
No.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Valentine. Dr. Thornton.
No.
Six nays, four ayes.
Okay, the board, um, takes no position. The next one, please.
The next bill for your consideration is PG five oh eight nineteen. This is House Bill one ninety-four. Prince George's County Public Schools Office of Accountability and Compliance. Um, this bill is a reintroduction from Delegate, uh, Washington. Um, what this bill, there are several components, so if you would just bear with me, I just wanna make sure I hit the major pieces in terms of what the bill would require and then just give you some context in terms of what we do currently. Um, the bill would, uh, require us to hire a new accountability and compliance officer, but the officer would be selected by the county council and a cor- and a, and accountable to the council. They would report to the council, not the Board of Education. Um, this new officer would provide the council with periodic reports, um, summarizing the office's activities, findings, recommendations, and accomplishments. Our existing Prince George's County, um, Internal Audit Department would be transferred under the new office, but our employees would retain, um, whatever years of service and status that, that they have currently. The authority of, under this new office would include investigation of allegations of mismanagement, misconduct, abuse, fraud, waste, and corruption. The bill would provide whistleblower protection for, from, for employees who make reports. It, uh, the new office would evaluate the adequacy and effectiveness of our internal controls regarding accounting, finance, technology, and operations. And the new office would also receive anonymous complaints about the school system, among other things. Um, just for your information, what we, here's the current law and here's what we do already and here are the differences, uh, between the bill and, and existing, um, practice. Currently, state law does provide whistleblower protection for public school employees. That was accomplished in a law in twenty seventeen, it's the Public School Employee Whistleblower Protection Act. Um, an employee may report e- either an abuse of authority, gross mismanagement, or gross waste of money. They may report a substantial and specific danger to public health or safety. They may also report any violation of the law. But what the law requires is that the employee must first report to the school system and give us an opportunity to respond and possibly cure, um, the, the, um, issue before proceeding with legal action. That's under current law. Um, when you look at what our existing Internal Audit Department does compared to what the bill proposes for this new accountability and compliance office to do, internal audit performs a substantial majority of those functions. Um, they've been operating a confidential hotline since two thousand and five. Last school year, they helped to investigate three hundred and ten hotline complaints. Um, in addition, last school year, uh, Internal Audit completed ninety-six audits, sixty-one property inventories, and also completed, um, or executed their board spending oversight. Their reports are, um, po- posted online, they're reporting to one of our board committees and, and the findings of their reports are posted for, uh, Public View. And also per your board policy, eighty-three seventy-three, the Internal Audit, uh, Department is required to receive a quality control review every three years. That was last completed in FY sixteen and they were found to be in full compliance with the governmental and audit standards. In addition, it's important to note that there are two other positions, uh, within the school system whose work would kind of overlap with what's being proposed under the bill. One of them is the chief, the, uh, Chief Accountability Officer this year, uh, whose, whose office would include, uh, performance audits of our academic areas of the school system. In addition, um, as you know, there's been a new position posted and I, I believe that the, um, hiring decision is pending approval, but we have a new Ethics and Compliance Officer position. Uh, the candidate for that role would be responsible for reviewing and evaluating compliance issues with our established policies and procedures and any related concerns to the school system. In addition, that new officer would monitor, document, and report the results of any compliance investigations and provide guidance to PG CPS executive leadership regarding compliance matters. So that's what we have. Um, finally, what's the difference, right? Based on what we have now and what's being proposed, where the, what are the two major differences? One is regarding accountability and authority. This new person would not report to you at all. So it takes the oversight of account, of internal audit functions out of this board's hands and it places it into the hands of the county council. Secondly, the Internal Audit Department that we have now, the, uh, some of the authority that's included in the bill is not authority that our internal audit, uh, auditor currently has. For example, the bill includes the right to take subpoenas, depositions, testimonies, receive evidence, also to petition a court to compel compliance with any orders or subpoenas. Okay, so a much, much broader authority, more akin to what you would find, um, i- in litigation, um, the type of a, authority that an attorney would have, uh, to complete that work. Also, as I understand it, and I know that, um, Michelle Winston is here and she can answer specific questions, but as, as I understand it based on the staff feedback, a substantial majority of the work that our Internal Audit Team, uh, does focuses on major compliance issues. So they're looking at policies and procedures and internal controls and best practices and things like that. But some of the, um, some of the focus of the bill, uh, in terms of, um, initiating investigations even against vendors, for example, requiring vendors to be subject to our Internal Audit Team or to provide budgetary analysis for the entire system, um, or doing much larger performer, performance audits are a, are a smaller subset of the work that our current team does. So those are the, that's a summary of the major differences between what we do and what the bill proposes for us to do differently.
Colleagues, a, a motion is in order to, uh, start our discussion of this. Is there a motion? I'm moved to do what?
I, I'm, I'm moved to oppose.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Prop move and seconded that we oppose the proposed legislation discussion and I'll call on Ms. Queen and then Mr. Thomas.
My question is, who's gonna pay for this? If they take it over, are they taking the responsibility of paying for the audit committee or the office?
No, ma'am, that would be, it would be on the Board of Education's budget.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas.
Um, quite frankly, I, I think this is, this bill is quite disrespectful. Um, I'm, I'm just gonna start by saying that. Um, I think it's disrespectful to us as a board. It, it takes away our, uh, ability and oversight over these matters. It's disrespectful to the Office of Internal Audit and Ms. Winston, who works very hard. Um, and so there is in no way that I can find any way to support this bill, um, as it, it simply just strips away, uh, a really important function of, of our, um, of our operating board.
Mr. Burrows.
Uh, after speaking with, um, the delegate, uh, about this bill, um, I, I think the intentions are, are pure to add, uh, an accountability metric that is outside of the board, um, is what I think he's attempting to do. Uh, and so, um, I just wanted to put that out there, you know, I, I don't think the intent is, 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 uh, nefarious. Um, I understand what the delegate is trying to do, uh, this might not be the best way to do it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, let me ask a question, please. Um, has the county council taken a position or has it been asked for a position?
The county, the county council, um, has not taken a position on this bill yet. They actually were waiting to hear from the Board of Education related to this particular bill. They have taken a position on other bills, um, but this one was held.
So before this bill was introduced, uh, are you aware of any, um, consultation, discussion, um, before it was introduced?
Yes, sir, this, this bill, I, I believe is the third year that this bill has been introduced by Delegate Washington. Um, each year prior to the, the, well, the last two years prior to the bill being introduced, he has, I know at least met with the school system, representatives. Um, Ms. Winston, I'm not sure if he's spoken to you directly or not, but, uh, uh, yeah, I believe he, he's spoken to Ms. Winston.
Okay.
Remember Dr. Goldson. I, I can't speak for the county council, but I know on the school system side that he has spoken to him.
That's good, that's good. Ms. Ahmed.
Uh, Mr. Thomas was talking about disrespect and, uh, there's one other point of disrespect that I wanted to mention and that is the disrespect of the hundreds of thousands of voters that elected so many of us in this position of power to oversee the Prince George's County Public School System.
Thank you, and, um, I completely agree with those sentiments, um, not as, uh, not as egregiously, but I do interpret, uh, curriculum determination from Annapolis as being equally disrespectful. But I won't reargue that, we've made our decision on that. Uh, can we, uh, can we now, Mr. Valentine?
Well, I, I mean, you, you took the words out of my mouth. I think for the very reason that Ms. Ahmed clarified, while she believes that, uh, that this lady from, from Annapolis should not supersede the, the voters or those who are appointed, I would, I would agree. I would also say, this bill was drafted, I think, years ago when this board was publicly in a different position. I believe, um, the leadership of our current chair and vice chair, I hope that would give him personally and others, um, a level of, uh, how to say comfort, that's, that's, that's not the right word, but confidence, uh, in our, in the board's ability to respond to recommendations that he may have felt. I'm not saying I may sit and agree with them, that he may have felt, maybe we're not, um, being addressed. And so if he were to call me tomorrow, I would say, I would ask you to look at our chair and vice chair and hopefully that would give him, um, an opportunity to, if after this year, he still feels the same way, to reintroduce it next year or a year after that, to see under our, our current leadership, maybe he would feel differently. And that, that's a testament to our, our leadership, I would just say.
Okay, colleagues, uh, please call the roll. Oh, I'm s- Mr. Thomas? Oh, hold on, hold on, Mr. Thomas wants to speak.
Yeah, I mean, I just did wanna add, I know you mentioned the intentions being pure. I think there are, if the intentions are truly pure, there would have been a different approach to this, uh, not to completely strip the oversight from the Board of Education. I also just wanna add that I, I, I personally feel that, um, based on evidence from social media, this was nefarious. So that's my, that is my opinion.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Ahmed.
This is a motion to oppose.
Motion to oppose PG five zero eight dash one nine.
Aye.
Mrs. Boozer-Strather.
Aye.
Mr. Burrows.
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks. Mr. Murray.
Aye.
Ms. Queen.
Aye, aye, aye.
Ms. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mr. Valentine. Dr. Thornton.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Is there another piece of legislation?
Yes, sir, the last local bill.
Please.
The last local bill is five oh nine nineteen, this is House Bill one ninety-six. Prince George's County Public Schools Elementary School, excuse me, Elementary School Students' Daily Physical Activity. Um, the bill would require the board to have a, um, program in place whereby the students are guaranteed a hundred and fifty minutes each week of physical activity, ninety minutes of which needs to be a physical education class. Um, in, in addition to each public school, would be required to designate a physical activity leadership team that would help to plan and coordinate opportunities to, to implement the, um, bill's requirements at each school. Um, two things important to note, the bill does permit an extension of time for the board. So if, if, uh, we are not in the position to implement by next year, there's a waiver process by which, um, the, an extension can be provided until July twenty twenty-two. So that's a two-year extension. Um, also Delegate Walker has, uh, similar to the financial literacy bill, he's also dropped a statewide bill requiring the same information and that bill hearing was held about a, a week or so ago. Here's what we know so far about, um, our school system in our PE. Um, ba- each school is able to structure, um, the schedule in a way based on, um, available space and, and courses. So not, we're pretty confident that none of our schools offers ninety minutes each week, every week. Um, some schools may alternate between forty-five minutes one week and then ninety the next, based on the, the scheduling, or sixty minutes one week and ninety week, ninety the next. Um, but we're pretty confident that there, the, the ninety minutes per week is not something, is not a mark we're hitting right now. Um, in part, those schedules allow for, time for other classes like music, um, and other art classes. So to, to meet the requirements of this bill, offering three classes of PE minimum per week, um, we've estimated that we would need to hire about seventy-one and a half, um, new employees. That would provide one additional teaching position at each of our larger elementary schools and those, there were eleven schools targeted as, as the larger ones. So one new PE teacher at the larger ones and then an additional half, pay, pay for an additional half position at the remaining a hundred and twenty-one elementary schools. Many of you may, may be aware that our teacher, our PE teachers currently may be assigned to more than one school. So, um, they, they may share the responsibilities, um, at more than one location. Assuming that fiscal impact for hiring about seventy, uh, one or so new teachers, that would be about five point two million dollars, whether we did it next year or by, uh, twenty twenty-two. That would cover salaries, benefits, and then additional costs that they estimated for mileage, substitutes, professional training, um, and, and substitutes needed to cover classes. Um, so that the estimated fiscal impact is about five point two million dollars total.
Is that it? Uh, Mr. Rose?
Just a couple other probably important points. So, and each of these fiscal notes, it's important to note that we're talking about dollars in nineteen. Um, if this board still chooses and the negotiations between PGCEA and our bargaining, bargaining units continue, each year that number goes up. So whether it's five point X this year, it could be six point X the next year and it, it goes up as we do cost of living adjustments and step increases and so on. So just think about it long-term, this number, dollars in nineteen, they're only dollars in nineteen. Twenty and twenty-one and twenty-two, really, we don't know the fiscal impact of those at all. I think Dr. Goldson has some additional information related to the scheduling as well.
Dr. Goldson.
Yes, I just wanted to add that as we look at what we require as a school system as the minimum, um, we had a task force that met several years ago and looked at making sure that our schools had a minimum of twenty minutes for recess, recommended thirty minutes. And so by doing that, by having that and then the minimum of forty minutes for physical education at grades K to five, we are able to, we're ten minutes short of meeting the one hundred and fifty minute requirement that's posed in the bill. Where the issue comes into play is the ninety minutes required. And that's where it becomes a little tricky because now we're looking for fifty minutes that we have to take away from core content areas and specialty classes. And that's where the harm comes in because we do have required minutes for comar and we do have students who already are part of specialty classes, meaning, um, instrumental music, vocal music, um, that also pulls them from their core courses as well.
Thank you. Colleagues, a motion is in order.
Motion to oppose.
Prop move and seconded that the proposed legislation be opposed by the board. Any further discussion, hearing, are there discussion? Let's see, is there discussion? Mr. Thomas.
By wait, Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Valentine.
I'm sitting, you see, you know, I, I would just sort of reiterate and put again context on what, uh, Dr. Goldson has mentioned. My, my children, um, a- attended elementary school here in the county. They have gym once, once a week, uh, but if, if this were to go into effect, they would have to cut, um, either a Spanish course or, um, a instrumental course or a choir course or an art course, um, all of which are incredibly important. At the same time, they do have, I believe, fifteen or twenty minutes of recess in addition to the, to the gym, um, maybe more than twenty, I beg your pardon. Um, but they, teachers are also, um, incorporating physical activity in the classroom and in some of their instruction as well. Um, so again, I understand this, but, uh, the question always is, if we do do this, then where do we cut other areas? And it's really hard to make that decision, so for that reason, I'm, I'm gonna oppose.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Queen.
Thank you, sir. Um, I just wanna, um, point off a clarification or maybe a question to you guys. Um, so is there another way that we can somehow get more physical activity in the classrooms? I hear a lot of complaints about issues on the bus, kids are rowdy, they riled up in the morning, they riled up in the evening, and then the issues we have in the classroom, sometime with our students who may have a little ADHD or Bob, or some who just can't keep still. Some kids are just anxious and they sort of need a little bit more of that. Every clear kid is not a kid who's gonna be able to do French and all these other classes. Some kids need the gym to keep them going and it's kinda hard. If we're gonna be a diverse school system and we're gonna represent every child, we need to think about that. Some of them really may need that extra time of having an extra exercise and it's something that really can be done with our teachers if we gave them the extra time. if we gave them the extra time instead of all the tests.
So let me answer it two-pronged. Extra time requires extra money. Because then we're working outside of the negotiated contract and agreement that prescribes how much time is provided for the school day. So therefore, to provide that extra time means we would have to come up with the funding to support that for our teachers. The second piece of it is that instructional pedagogy does require that our students are not just sitting in their seat doing a ditto, or just reading from the text. And those experiences, experiences that our students have should be hands-on, experiential, and don't always necessarily have to take place in the classroom.
Thank you. Ms. Berkeley, call the roll. I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Shepherd?
Yeah, I have a question, because studies shows that physical activity engages, develop the brain, make the kids want to study more, energize them to get ready. What else are we doing in the school system? I know you say that we, we recommend the 30 minutes. Is there any other avenues that we're looking to make sure that the kids get that physical activity?
Yes, actually, we created a School Health and Wellness Council that provided a variety of activities in addition to the recommended allotted time for recess, and so I will provide that document to you.
One of the things that colleagues and Dr. Golson, we might want to consider, because we're trying to achieve this objective within the context of the school day and schoolhouse. And that is, may not be the most, many parents don't even assume that is the best way to get physical activities for their children after the school, on the weekends, they're in clubs, they're in activities, they're in whatever. So working with our partners, we need to find out what is the physical exposure of our children that which may be augmented by the school system. Mr. Rhodes?
And thank you for saying that, sir. I, I actually think there's some other opportunities for the school system to support our county executive, who currently has a pretty large initiative around character education and youth sports. I know Mr. Burrows has been integral in looking at the turf field issue as we work with our Maryland National Park and Planning, and the county executive, and other, our state senators. So there are some other things that are outside the school day, and things that we can do to encourage in participation. It's fair to note that at least 80-plus of our school sites serve as Maryland National Park and Planning locations after school. If we go straight down the street to Perrywood Elementary, for example, and several others, there are amazing, Vansville Elementary, great, amazing opportunities that do exist. So we probably should do a, a asset mapping of what currently exists, work with our partners across our different areas and agencies. We may be able to put together a whole plan that looks at the entire child and not just through the school system, seven and a half hour a day.
Hey, colleagues, we have two more speakers, and then we'll, we'll vote. Mr. Valentine, I think I got it right?
Yeah. I, I want to say, when I joined the board five years ago, I, I think it was during the time we were restoring middle school sports. Mr. Burrows, remember this better than I do. And so I, I, I think there are opportunities to supplement with other activities, and I'm, I'm glad that the board did it at the time. Another opportunity, I think, so for example, my son is a fifth grader, but next year he'll be on the middle school basketball team, but he cannot practice with the middle school basketball team. And I asked the principal, is there a policy that says he can't practice even though he can't play in the games? And apparently he can't. And that's, I mean, I'm fine with that, but as a board, if there's a way that we can allow students who are in a K-8 school to be able to practice with the team if, if the, the coach says he or she is up to do that, that's another way to offer physical activity. And then our community partnership clearly around other sports that come into the building at the time. I think there was a soccer program that was going to come into after-school program, and now his team does have a soccer team. And so clearly, all these things are free to our students. We offer, in many cases, transportation home after that. And so I think there are opportunities for us to supplement a lot of activity after school, but in ways that we can do that without much cost, without actually having to add any additional staff, I think we should consider that. And so I welcome any recommendations moving forward about how we can do that. Unfortunately, my, my son won't benefit, but I believe other children in the future would.
Thank you. We have one more speaker, and then we'll vote. Ms. Queen?
Yes, I just want to say, I do thank you for, I do recognize that Park and Planning has a lot of schools, at a lot of schools, but it's not at a lot, especially in the Capitol Heights area where it's a health enterprise zone, and also where it's issues with health in that zone. So there's no areas in that. So having extra PE time is very important in an area that I live at and represent a lot of schools that we're a lot about municipalities that. So it is very important that we do get that. I mean, even though I may not want to vote on this, but it is something that the Board of Education as a whole needs to take in consideration for schools who don't have a recreation center, that we go back to letting programs or organizations who used to come in and do activity with these kids do it. We have stopped a lot of people, and I have to say, when we put some things in the hands of our principals, from being able to come in and have programs that we didn't have to pay for. So we, as a Board of Education, need to look at something that makes sure that every child across the border is getting the same thing for the ones who have a recreation center and the ones who not. We have schools that are being paid for, Janus is there, our, our tax dollars are paid by public. We need to utilize these schools so that our kids can get the best out of every school.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Ms. Berkeley, call the roll, please.
Ms. Ahmed?
Motion to oppose, correct?
Motion to oppose PG 509-19.
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Oppo, oppose, correct?
Motion to oppose PG 509. Mr. Burrows? Pardon?
Abstained.
Yes, sir. Ms. Eubanks? Mr. Murray?
No.
Ms. Queen?
No.
Ms. Shepherd? Mr. Thomas?
No.
Mr. Valentine? Mr., Dr. Thornton, excuse me?
Yes.
Five ayes, three nays.
The board takes no position. Is there another piece of legislation?
Sir, that concludes the local bills. There was one additional statewide bill that you had asked for me to have prepared for discussion. I can do that if you'd like me to.
Yes, it's for a discussion. We're not being asked to take a position.
We are not recommending position, just wanted to provide it for your information.
Please do that.
Okay. We were asked to present information on the Ready to Read Act. This is an introduction from Senator Zucker. I apologize, this is not in your materials, board members. This was something we were requested to have today.
There is a copy that is available.
Oh, great, thank you so much. Thank you. This bill is a reintroduction from a similar piece of legislation last year, but essentially what it does is it provides a process for schools to screen, identify, and then to provide supplemental education services for students with reading difficulties. And it's, it's looking to target or to identify as early as possible signs of dyslexia or other reasons why a student may be struggling to master reading at the grade level. The bill is, is pretty prescriptive in terms of, sorry, not prescriptive, sometimes that can carry a little bit. It's, it's descriptive, thank you, in terms of the type of tool that, that needs to be used at each level. And the ultimate goal is to be able to identify it, get the parents in the loop about what additional instructional services are needed, provide progressive monitoring of the students, and to make adjustments where needed, so that you're hopefully getting these kids caught up as early as possible. We are, we have asked for feedback from our instructional and our special education team on the diagnostic tool information that's included in the bill. Because as I understand it, from last year, we had a pilot program at three schools where we've been using a specific dyslexia screening tool. I'm going to mess up the name, I'm not even going to try it, but it's a, it's a tool that we're using at three schools. And we've asked them for information on whether or not we're still continuing with that pilot, has it been expanded? How, and also how does what we're currently doing, the work that we're currently doing compare with what the bill would require us to do. So that's information I don't have available for you today, but I do know that we have something in the works in terms of diagnostic, diagnostic tools.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows? Is that your, would you like?
I was gonna say on the other thing, I'll just come back.
Okay. Okay, that's, Ms. Struthers, do you have any comments about it? Because you certainly have a particular interest on this.
Yeah, I definitely have a particular interest. Are we opening up to some comments?
Comments, yes.
Yeah, I do have a particular interest in this, and it, you know, and I want to say I fully understand there is a cost to the Prince George County school system for this. And we used to absorb that cost. We were leaders in screening K through second children in dyslexia many years ago, using the Orton-Gillingham method screener at that time. And, and the reason I'm being supportive of this is this is our core business, literacy, reading. And we know the struggles our children have if the 20% of our students that aren't screened and intervened early, the struggles they have and the impact on the system, and then the cost to the system. So this could be, over time, a cost balance. Our, the Prince George County Council did support last year's version. So I think that would indicate that the council understands that there's a cost. And I have to say, you know, as, as someone who just ran for the board and spoke to a lot of families, it was clear to me the cost to individual families. $2,000 to have your child screened when you realize in the third or fourth grade your child is still not reading like other children, and you don't know why. The cost for tutors out of your own pocket. And the cost to many that I learned oftentimes when I met families who are either homeschooling or made another choice was dyslexia often was mentioned. So I think that, I, I appreciate this bill and the, and the senators who have co-sponsored this and brought it forward once again. There will be a House version that I think we'll need to, to look at, and I know there'll certainly be a conference committee that probably will, there'll be changes, but I just want to say that I support this, because this, this is about reading. This is about what our children have to do to succeed in anything else in our school system.
Thank you, colleague. Mr. Murray?
Colleagues, I would like to second the sentiments of my colleague. This is an issue that I've become particularly informed upon in the last few months and very passionate about. As a kindergarten and first grade special educator, I can tell you that the struggles of developing readers, and particularly those suffering from forms of dyslexia, are very challenging. And I think that it's the critical mission of this board to ensure that, that our graduates are not only reading on grade level, but set up for all the opportunities that life affords them. I think that to that end, you know, this, this is potentially the most important issue facing our school district. And, and I don't think we can afford to wait another year. I think that we're fortunate to have so many senators and support and so many experts that have wrapped their head around this. And it's something, like I said, that I witness every single day. And, you know, if you can't consistently distinguish between the letters B, D, and P because of the way your brain functions, and the instructor in front of you is not trained or prepared to support you in what you need, and you're now being passed on to third, fourth grade and still reading on a kindergarten and first grade level because the school system didn't provide all of the interventions and resources that we could if we did everything that we could, I think that that's our failing, not that students. And, and so colleagues, I will make a motion to support this legislation, and would really appreciate if it got a second.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that we now have a motion to support the legislation. The discussion is based upon that now. And Mr. Burrows?
I want to thank David Yu for your comments. It's certainly valuable to have a teacher on the board, and now we have multiple. And I know Ms. Boozer Struthers and Mr. Murray have talked about this. I know that, I'm hoping that there's a work group that will come out of, out of this. Anything that I can do to support your efforts, I certainly want to do. I'm very passionate about special education. As someone who had and still has relatives in our district that are in that program, I think whatever supports we can provide our students earlier will benefit them in the long run. So Ms. Boozer Struthers, Mr. Murray, I look forward to you guys collaborating and working together and meeting with the advocates and experts, and, and really educating the board on this topic more.
Thank you. And this is a very important issue for me, and I want to thank you, colleague, for organizing the session that I had with the group that's advocating, advocating for this. One of the things I said to the group, as Mr. Burrows just pointed out, one of the critical things from the state is the special ed funding formula that would drive the funding necessary to do this. This is a major issue throughout the state, and that's why we have the special ed multiplier there. Because we, once we recognize the need, we then have to be able to respond. And one of the frustrating things about me, as I've experienced it over the years, is to recognize lofty needs that everybody wants, and then not be willing to fund it. That is very hurtful for me, you know? People are now voting on whether or not we'll have multiplier that will drive money to take care of these kids that we say we love and we want to help. I just want that anytime these, these type things come up, I want to put that on the table, because it's very critical that the multiplier effect, which is a special ed component, most of these students, many of them are not special ed, I'm not saying that. But many of them become that. That's why I asked about the autism spectrum and all of that. You have to have a particular, particular formula that drives money so that we can pay for what we say we want to do for our babies. It is wrong to make promises that we ultimately cannot fund. Mr. Rhodes?
Just as a point of information, Ms. Boozer Struthers, House Bill 0690 actually is the cross-fired bill for this particular one.
Okay, we have two more speakers, colleagues. Mr. Thomas and Ms. Queen. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I just wanted to, it seems like we have a lot of support around this, but I just wanted to also offer mine. I want to thank Ms. Boozer Struthers for your words, and also, Mr. Murray, want to also note that some of the, some of the brains behind this are, are some of my own constituents. And I had the opportunity to meet with them. I know Ms. Boozer Struthers also got to, and I urged some of my colleagues, and I'm glad to hear that everyone is kind of behind this. I just wanted to add, you know, my own insight, you know, Mr. Murray referred to his experience as a kindergarten, first grade teacher, and the importance of it as it plays out here, but I just want to urge all of us to remember as a former eighth and seventh grade teacher, the, the impact of this continues throughout our, our children's education as they matriculate through sec, through primary, and then, and then secondary, and on the path to whatever route they decide to pursue. So there are really long-lasting impacts of a program like this that, that we may only see the real fruits of it actually manifest in, you know, the next 12 years. But I just want to encourage, encourage folks to remember that this is bigger than just what's happening in first and second and third grade, and it, it has long-lasting effects that could be really profound.
Thank you. Ms. Queen?
Again, I definitely want to support this bill in agreement with my colleagues. As a person who's representing a community who don't have the parents to out-speak for them, because a lot of my young parents, I know it's definitely needed. But I also have a question to Dr. Golson and your staff. Will, whether our special ed, ADA, disability have grants that we could go after to actually to be working and helping these kids right now? But the problem is, we need to make sure that these funds are doing innovative technology to help the kids. Not a lot of it's spending on overhead costs, but a lot of it's spending to help the children in the classroom. But this is something we can actually do on a local level, because it is so much money going out here for disability, for special ed, and for ADHD, but we need to go after it and use it for our babies.
In terms of grants, I'm not aware of any specific grants, but we'll reach out to Dr. Mason to determine if there are some. But it is important to know that we do have a designated line item to support students with dyslexia in our existing budget.
Needs to be larger. Mr. Valentine?
It's important for clarification. You had initially mentioned not taking a vote on this tonight. Was there a reason why Mr. Byas did not present this to us? Is it, is it something that's going to be?
Yeah, it's, I can answer. It's not a local bill. We, we received a request today to look at, to bring the bill forward. We did initial research based off of last year this bill was introduced. And we haven't literally just saw that the House bill was dropped, so we haven't had a chance to do our analysis on the differences between the two.
And, and so when do you anticipate this bill being heard? 7:34?
I, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Byas. It's your job.
See, see how he's answering all my questions? The Senate bill. So, the Senate bill, the Senate bill hearing, this one will be on February twenty-sixth. The House bill hearing is on February twenty-first.
Okay, and so you anticipate any changes to this between now and the twenty-sixth, right?
There is absolutely no guarantee about that. Yeah, by the, by the time of the hearing, they may have submitted amendments, sure. This bill was heavily amended, just FYI, last year, by the time it got out of the House. So it did pass the House, but it died in the Senate.
Do you know we took a position in this last year or not?
We did not. May opposed, not on the intent, but just on how prescriptive it was. And it wanted the control over the assessments and all of the follow-up to be in the, the control of the local jurisdictions. But we did not take a position last year.
Thank you. Please call the roll. I'm sorry.
I did.
Okay, just, just say Dr. Thornton recognized me. Please go ahead. Only you can do that, though. Go ahead.
Dr. Gosin, I had a question about what are the tools or, or if there are any tools that we utilizing to assess our students currently with dyslexia?
We do, and I don't have that list in front of me, but I can provide it in a follow-up response.
One question. If, if I vote for this, am I violating my principle about local control? I would be, Ms. Ahmed. Okay, if I vote for it, I'll be violating my principle. Call the roll.
The question is, can we do this without this? That's the question you have to ask yourself, sir.
I'm a politician, so if I, if I have eight votes, if I have eight votes without my vote, I can, I know what to do. Go ahead, call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed?
Motion to support, aye.
Motion to support Senate Bill seven three four, which is House Bill zero six nine zero.
Aye.
Ms. Boozer-Strather?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks? Mr. Murray?
Aye.
Ms. Queen?
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine? Dr. Thornton?
I could do like my vice chair and abstain, but I'm going to have some backbone. Aye. I've got the camera on this.
Right, right, right.
Y'all got the camera on this?
I'm sorry, voter, no.
You got the camera on this? Ms., Ms. Dudley, did you take that picture? Come on, Edward.
Right, I might, you might flip my vote.
Is there another piece of legislation?
No, so those are the bills. Thank you.
Okay, I got you, I got you. Okay, Mr. Burrows.
Colleagues, I do apologize for ducking out at the beginning of public session. I was here for the entirety of executive session. My program is running across the street at the courthouse. I'm trying to do both things at the same time. One of the bills that I care very deeply about is Financial Literacy Bill. And I know you've, I believe you've taken no position on that. I, I just kind of wanted to express some thoughts about that within a very short timeframe. Mr. Chair. You know, I think financial literacy is so, so important. Sixty-four percent of our students are farm, free and reduced meals. Means they live in poverty. Parents cannot pass down what they don't know. And I think that one of the best lessons that we can teach our students is how to be financially literate and sound. I think about the federal government shutdown where we had federal government employees who literally could not survive without one or two paychecks. And my little sister's a freshman at Delaware State and immediately received so many offers for credit cards and, and all, all types of stuff. I know Mr. Murray visited Laurel High School not too long ago, and he asked the class their, their thoughts about this. And one of the students said, well, I, I take PE every year, you know? I take physical education four years in a row. And there are other courses that, not saying that PE isn't important, but there, there are other courses in our, that we offer that will have lesser of an impact long-term for our students. And so I understand that the board has no position. I would encourage us to work together on this as a board, absent the legislation, because the legislation fails every year, so this one might fail. But how do we work together as a board to expand financial literacy as a course? Maybe as a requirement, something that I would love to work with my colleagues about. But then also with the, with the physical education bill, once again, I understand that the, the five million dollar price tag really stood out to me. And I don't know where we would get that money from, but at the same time, I want to do it. That's why I abstained, because I was conflicted on it. I think as a board, like, we care about expanding physical education opportunities for our students. We can get into the back room with the administration, with parking planning, with county government, and figure that out as, as a body. And so, please, when you go and deliver these verdicts to Annapolis, we're not against financial literacy, we're not against expanding pre-K. We want to work with our legislators on these important issues where there is commonality. It's just that the board as a whole needs to kind of work together through some of these things. So please, you know, don't deliver our harsh verdicts, you know, too harsh. We, we want to work on these issues and we also care about these issues.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you. Just emphasize local control by the Board of Education.
And a fully elected school board. Fully, a full repeal of HB eleven oh seven. We'll, we'll talk about that.
Dr. Gosin, do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay. Colleagues, I would indicate that follow-up items from our January twenty-fourth board meeting will be posted on board docs. I'd have a motion to approve action taken in executive session, please. Colleagues, it's been moved and seconded that we approve items dealt with in executive session involving labor negotiations, legal matters, internal audit, update, personnel appointments, personnel matters, administrative matters, student appeals, and the CEO report. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no, the ayes have it. Motion to adjourn, please. It's moved and properly seconded. Those in, in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, yeah, okay, okay, okay.